And it's eight o'clock. There we go. It's such coordination. It's eight o'clock here. We'll have our weekly legislative update for Deschutes County. You know, no rush into this. I'm just acknowledging the top of the hour here. I do have the bill report. Can somebody help kind of put the context of what's going on today? Or I don't know.
Yes. Uh, yes, Commissioner Devon, I sure can. Whitney's out today, so I stepped in and said I would be happy to help. Um, we have a few bills to discuss this morning. Commissioner Adair is asked to discuss one that's not on our list. Uh, that certainly appears timely. And Commissioner Chang should be joining us momentarily, and he would like to discuss the letter to support the Mosaic Community Health Campus. Uh, the state lottery bond request. So those are some of the topics we have uh for our discussion this morning.
Great. Yeah. So as I say, we can kind of slow walk it for another minute and see who else can join us. I see Doug Riggs is here. Good morning, Doug.
Morning, everyone. I'm in the car, so I'm gonna keep my video off.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Car or big truck, Doug?
That's my question too, Nick. Are you in your, are really in a car?
Well, let's just, let's just leave it at that and move on. So uh, so go ahead with the bill that Commissioner Dare was talking about.
Sure. Let's, let's jump right in. And I, I did forward this uh to Peter as well, just so because it addresses um uh EFU zone. Commissioner Dare, I just pulled it up for the first time. It's uh twenty-five oh six and then specifically the dash nine amendments. I can, I can jump in and begin to summarize it, or if you would like to, that would be great. Either way.
Is it on the bill list for today?
It's, it's not on the list today. It's actually a bill that um, our neighbors, Wasco County, um, the Columbia Gorge, it's, they have a project called the Columbia Gorge Medical Center. It's that forty-two bed facility they're trying to put in, and they need this legislation to pass in order to follow through with that. And I, I thought it was really important. It's sixteen beds of secure residential, sixteen regular beds, and then twelve beds modeled somewhat like after our stabilization center, but um it's really, really important as far as the lack of beds on this side of the mountain. And then yesterday I did hear the really unfortunate story that Rimrock has the only like teenage program for substance issues to um in um Crinville. They are only staffed for quarter capacity. They could actually have twenty-four um people at that facility. They can only have, I think it's six. So their staffing is just really impacted in today's world. So anyway, I just felt like this might be something if we can look at it and give an extra boost to it. I did get it. Um, I did have Doug check on it yesterday for me. Thank you very much, Doug. And it doesn't sound like it's dead yet. It doesn't sound, it sounds like it needs a little bit more energy. I don't know. Doug, do you have anything else you can add?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Um, I did sit in on the hearing a couple of months ago on the bill. There was broad support from uh behavioral health providers, law enforcement, also from the county, Steve Kramer from Moscow County was one of the commissioners testifying in support of it. Um, so I think it would be a good bill to support. It's in Ways and Means, and it's awaiting uh funding. Uh, like, you know, most things are right now until the revenue forecast comes out. Um, but I, I think from everything that I've heard, it was a good balanced issue. I will say on the staffing workforce issues, uh, there are at least a third fewer residential beds for youth in Oregon than we need. Maybe a full fifty percent less residential beds for youth in substance abuse and mental health. Um, in high acuity youth, we've talked about this before with House Bill thirty-one twenty-six, which is the bill that uh could, could identify St. Charles was kind of a regional hub. So it's a real crisis. Um, there are at least three or four other residential programs uh that are at, at the brink of closure, including the only one in the South Coast, Babylon Ranch. Uh, one of the major ones in Clackamas County, Parrot Creek, and Looking Glass Youth and Family Services, which takes kids from all around the state. They're in Eugene, Springfield, but they have Central Oregon kids uh in their program. They're in OY program. Uh, so you know, what Commissioner Dare is pointing out is, is really true. There's, there's a huge workforce shortage. It's a combination of rates and regulations, uh overregulation and underrated, underrates. So something that we've got to work on uh region-wide and statewide.
Yeah, you gotta hand up.
Oh, could I just say one more thing? And then yesterday, Rick Treleffan, who runs Best Care, shared with me. Normally, you know, he's run the program, I could say forever. Um, he, they lose one client a year. In the last three months, they've had seven clients that have overdosed and died. Seven in the last three months. And he was saying that fentanyl pills are from five to ten dollars for like a daily use. Um, heroin used to be two hundred to five hundred a day. So you had to really steal a lot if you were into heroin. But in today's fentanyl pills, um, it's, it's incredibly frightening what, what is going on in our community.
Janice.
Um, just a comment on twenty-five oh six, which is a supersiting bill. The commissioner that um Commissioner Adair spoke with, and I'm forgetting his name. I think it's Sherman. No. Can't hear you, Commissioner.
Steve Kramer.
Kramer, sorry.
He's the head of AOC's health.
Yeah, and one of the things he pointed out is that there's also a dash ten amendment, I believe, and he was really advocating for support, written support from our board for the dash nine amendment. The dash ten amendment further restricts locations of residential treatment programs um such that it would make the location that they have identified for their project in Wasco impossible. And it has to do with proximity to a um I think an elementary school or a preschool, and again, is related to this um notion that people with mental illness are somehow more dangerous to children, which is actually not factually um supported. So I think he was really concerned that the support be explicitly called out for the dash nine amendment version of the bill.
Yeah, the irony here, and someone pointed out this in the hearing, I think one of the, the sheriff from Moscow County pointed out that if you don't have a residential facility, a treatment facility in a community, then there is no buffer at all. The, the people with serious mental health issues or overdosing on fentanyl on the street could be on the school property or, you know, hanging out on the track. So, you know, it's, it's a worst case situation to not have treatment and have people untreated and on the streets uh and closer to in proximity to kids than they otherwise would be if they were in a supervised type of um atmosphere.
And Doug, sorry, just one more point. It's not that the bill doesn't already have some restrictions. So it's not that supporting the dash nine would mean you're supporting a version that says there's no safety protocols. There are no restrictions. It's just slightly less um uh restrictive than the dash ten amendment.
If I can just provide one more bit of context, I just pulled up the dash nine. It states a county may, and that's why I just sent this over to Peter, just so it's on his radar too. Allow a residential home in an existing dwelling in any area zone for farm use, including an exclusive farm use zone, et cetera, and the county may impose zoning requirements on the establishment of a residential home in areas described in this elsewhere in the bill. So in any event, just to provide some context to where the locations are maybe allowed.
Commissioner Chang.
Um, thank you. Um, there was a pretty lengthy discussion on this uh bill on this issue at the AOC Health and Human Services Legislative Committee or Steering Committee on Friday, and um, there, there were a significant number of commissioners who were expressing concerns uh about the bill. Um, as far as I could tell, uh, they were mainly just trying to uh maintain maximum discretion for themselves and um reasons to uh deny the citing of, of facilities that our community uh sorely needs. So, you know, I, I didn't find, I didn't find their concerns. Um, you know, and, and their arguments are very persuasive. I would support um Deschutes County coming out in favor of this bill.
Uh, so let's get clear here. So uh what was that you just said that we do want to support it?
Uh, I would, I would like for us to support the bill.
And then what about the dash nines? That's why I'm getting real clear. So dash nine opposed to dash ten?
Um, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever the most current version is that, you know, they've, they've tried to kind of refine out and strike this balance between, you know, giving, giving, maintaining a, a degree of local control while, while still allowing us to do the citing of these facilities.
Yeah. So I, and I haven't read the, the, you know, the words, lacking away to the words, but it sounds like the concept is dash nine is where it was started here, as in that's a, a good and a may out, may, may cite. So that sounds like it may be the, the right position or a good position, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. I just pulled up the dash ten and the dash ten does discuss uh, it, it's pretty limited in what it does. Uh, what Janice was saying, it says it prohibits a residential facility, a residential home located within a children's safety zone by or accepting as an employee or resident. And then it talks about the person required, anyway, goes into that. So.
So yeah, just takes a little bit more off the table. May or may not be the the reality on the street is what we're hearing. So, so is there support for advocating for twenty-five oh six dash nine specifically? Uh, I think that's where we started here, right, Commissioner Dare?
Yes, that's where we started. And, and Janice, when I talked to Steve, the ten wasn't there, but you're saying that he was concerned with the ten. They were, their, their project would no longer be um workable?
He said if the ten passes, they can't do their plan.
Okay, and, and we do need their plan on this side. So uh I would stay with the dash nine.
Okay, so then is there uh, how about a motion? So twenty-five oh six dash nine?
Okay, yes, some of twenty-five oh six dash nine to support with the two, I guess?
Second.
Okay, and then it sounds like all in favor. I would say yes.
Okay. Yes.
Aye.
Okay. You took a position today. So thank you very much. Lots of good information uh, uh, you know, brought, brought to light here.
Great. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Devon. Um, just a quick note, I understand that Commissioner Chang must leave by eight-thirty. And uh, so we can, we can take up the letter for Mosaic Community either, health either now, or we can jump into another bill or two that are highlighted for discussion.
Well, let's jump into that, the letter real quick.
Okay. Uh, so thank you, Commissioners. We received the letter and Commissioner Chang, I don't know if you want to summarize it in, in any more detail. I did forward it to the board um regarding support for Mosaic Community Health uh ca- campuses, uh state lottery bond request. Um, so it's, it's a letter to the legislature with a number of other signatories. I don't have them all before us, but I do have a draft copy of the letter. Um, happy to turn it over to the board for discussion. Commissioner Chang, any other comments on it?
I, I don't have any other comments. This would, this would assist with expanding Mosaic's clinic facilities, which we all understand are critically important to realizing the goals of our public health department and um to fully building out uh the Connors, uh that the complex of affordable housing and, and clinics out there.
So is there a specifically uh state lottery bond uh ask, or is this like a, you know, capital package that's being talked about in the legislature? Does Doug, do you know about that?
Yeah, this, this would be probably included in, in House Bill fifty-thirty, the lottery bond bill at the end of the session. Um, I know uh a number of the federally qualified health centers have, have similar requests. There are four statewide. Uh, similar one is down in Medford, one is in Eastern Oregon, one is in the Salem area. Um, and they are, I believe that they are all coordinating on this. The good thing about federally qualified health centers is that they, they leverage quite a bit of federal money to come into a community. Uh, the, the match is, is very good. And they serve a population that otherwise might not have uh ready access to appropriate healthcare. So from a uh community health perspective, they reduce the, the usage of the emergency room, improve health outcomes. So I, I would say that this supporting them would, would uh further the goals of the county as far as public health goes.
So Doug, Doug, do you know which one, where in Eastern Oregon? What hospital or, or what center we're talking about?
Uh, there's an FQHC up in Pendleton, and I believe that that's the federally qualified health center that also has a, a capital funding request.
So that's the hospital that only has twenty-four beds licensed in it now. What a nightmare. Then all the doctors leave the community unless, you know, with, the, the hospital had a hundred, seventy-five beds a hundred years ago. And today it's licensed for twenty-four. It's
Yeah, that, that's
It's not a good, not a good
Okay.
No, it's just, it's a mess.
So I'm looking at the letter. Is it a specific amount? So it says they must raise eighteen million of a twenty-one point five million dollar project. I don't see it's a specific ask in here. Is this just as much as they can get kind of letter?
I can check with them today and get back to you. Uh, I Commissioner Chang, I don't know if they've shared you with you the exact, you know, how much they want from lottery funding or not. I haven't heard.
I, I, they have not. Um, I, I think in part it's waiting for the revenue forecast and figuring out what they can ask for. Um, I, I guess the other thing I, I'd just like to point out is this is essentially the equivalent of the ask we made to the legislature for our other fellow federally qualified health center in Deschutes County, um, Lapine Community Health Clinic uh last year or two years ago. So um, this is you know, basically kind of uh something that we do.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I was just wondering if there's a specific amount to ask. Are you supportive, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
So the letter as presented, uh, the last, the sounds, the very last couple. So Mosaic has my full support regarding the submission of CDS. That's a different concept. It was probably in that letter. Just needs to be removed.
Yeah, this was just all in the draft letter that they sent.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so let's just kind of review it a little bit more specifically for our words. So yeah, it sounds like there's support. We'll get it around and uh yeah, you want to make a motion, Commissioner Chang?
Well, I, I can't remember whether we did or we didn't support uh, support them making a CDS request. I, I, I do believe this came up. But somebody would have to go back and, and look at uh, you know, which CDS requests we advanced forward and which ones we didn't. But if we, if we did support this one, then um, language saying that we support their CDS request too is, is probably okay.
Well, that's fine. Yeah. So it's just the context. Uh, it, it doesn't sound like it's from the board. It's a specific. It was a different topic in the bottom of this letter. That's all I'm saying. We can, if we did officially support it as a community, uh congressionally directed spending, we can acknowledge that too. I was just referring to how it was worded.
Got it. Okay. Um, yeah, I would move approval of this letter with uh potential minor refinements uh based on uh fact finding.
There we go.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll uh get that circulated with our, on our letterhead and all the good stuff uh today.
So maybe we switch back to Doug here. Uh, just kind of give us an update if there's any any uh thoughts for the day here.
Oh, yeah, lots, lots of things going on in Salem. Uh, I'm headed down this morning for a joint committee on tax expenditures hearing and then Ways and Means, Always Means hearing. They are passing many of the smaller agency budgets, which is very typical. They try to get through, you know, the Marine Board and the, you know, other small budgets uh early on that are non-controversial. So they've got, I think, eight or nine of those budgets up today. Um, the big news out of Salem is that uh uh Republicans uh have walked out of the session mainly in protests on provisions in House Bill two thousand and two that relate to parental consent for minors under the age of fifteen. I'd say that's the, that's the biggest issue, the thing that got them the most upset. So uh they were entering day, they entered day nine of the walkouts on Thursday, and of course, uh, for those who hit ten unexcused absences under ballot measure one thirteen, that would prohibit them from running for reelection. So that's kind of a thermonuclear step on both sides. So um I, I was told last night that uh Republicans offered and the governor requested that the Senate suspend floor sessions so they could try to negotiate over the weekend prior to them hitting, to any of them hitting that ten-day cap. And so that's what's happened. Senator Wagner has, has postponed or uh canceled floor sessions for today, tomorrow, and for Sunday. Uh, the, they, I don't know where or how uh the two sides are meeting or sitting down and discussing things. My guess is that initially it probably will not go well. There are, there's some very hard feelings between the, the two sides right now. But uh the fact that they're, they're talking, I think is a really positive development. So that's encouraging. Um, the other big news is that the revenue forecast comes out on Wednesday, the seventeenth. Uh, that will really determine how much money does the state have to spend. Um, I, I kind of think that the revenue forecast is going to be up. So all of you can hold, hold me to that next week when we get back together on Friday and see if I was wrong or not. Uh, but businesses are still hiring. There have been layoffs in some sectors, but uh, you know, some of the tech workers who intel has laid off have already been hired again. Um, so, and there's an awful lot of state money that is still yet to be spent. And that, of course, will keep people employed for some period of time. So my guess is it's up. Um, I don't think it'll be down. But whether or not it's up or down will determine, you know, do they have extra money for things like courthouse inflationary costs and, and Mosaic clinics and things like that. So um we will see. In spite of the walkout, things continue to, to, to move. Things continue to happen. Hearings continue to be held. The House, Republicans are not walked out. The House has been very busy. House committees have been uh busy working on Senate bills. Uh, Senate committees have been busy working on House bills and, and not all the Republicans are gone all the time. Many of them are in the building every single day and still attending committee hearings and, and voting in committees. Uh, some are not, but uh I'd say the majority probably still around. So, so we'll see. Um, six forty-four, I think, as I mentioned last week, we signed a law by the governor. Uh, so congratulations. We have our ADU bill in place. So I'll um uh, watch the implementation of that bill. Um, and uh, and I will mention that one of the bills in the list, which I think we'll get to, uh thirty-two seventy-seven is a land use bill. Uh, we had talked back and forth between some of the commissioners and I and the staff about whether or not that's an appropriate vehicle for amending uh for RV citing shelter issues. Not sure that any more bills are going to be scheduled by the House Rules Committee other than, you know, specific leadership bills, but I do have their request uh to see if that's possible into the Chair of the Committee, Julie Vey. So after that uh long explanation of what's going on in Salem, I'll go pause and take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Let's go on to our bill list. Uh, any other items?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. So, so thirty-two seventy-seven, what is the, the next list on, on the, the next bill on my list? To discuss on if there's anything more to discuss with that, Doug, or if that captured it.
Well, I, I think so. I mean, the, the question is whether or not any bills that are, that have already thirty-two seventy-seven is a placeholder bill that was introduced by Representative Maxine Dexter uh related to studies of homelessness. And so uh because it has um kind of a, one of those kind of vague relating to clause, it could be a vehicle for anything addressing homelessness. Um, so it's, it's a possibility. It is not. Uh, it had a, a brief hearing earlier in the session. Uh, and the Rules Committee is not covered by the hearing restrictions. It's a committee that stays in effect until the very end of the session. It's just a matter of whether or not the, the, the committee, which has an awful lot else on its agenda, is willing to open up a bill and amend a bill, gut stuff a bill that has been uh dormant and it's not really had much attention. So what Rep. Vey, Chair Vey asked me to do was uh was chat with uh our two central Oregon legislators from Deschutes County. Uh, Representative Propp and Representative Levy and uh it judged their level of interest in, in pushing her, but she was, I will say, reluctant uh this late in the session to tackle a complex issue like this, but it's not completely impossible.
So back to the beginning here, this is a, a placeholder bill that, that the content could be defined in short order. What would the what path? Is there any path being proposed that needs to be bought in on? As in, if we say yes, I don't know what we're saying yes to at this time, you know, supporting.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think the, the, the discussion and the decision for the commission is uh if you would like me to aggressively pursue with the committee and also with Representative Propp and Representative Levy, an amendment which would take portions of or all of uh Senate Bill six seventy-three and, and insert that into House Bill thirty-two seventy-seven. It, it's, it's a long shot, but it's a possibility.
And what's six seventy-three again?
Six seventy-three was the bill that would allow RV shelter citing at the edge of the UGB.
On non, on resource land or not? Yeah. So I guess, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts here. So I, you know, I'm just trying to get specific about what we'd be asking for. So that would at the edge of a, a, a UGB on private land or public land or resource land or non-resourced land? Does anybody know?
I, I
I think I'll defer to, to Nick and/or Commissioner Adair, who were more because six seventy-three was a bill that uh the commission had endorsed, but it was a bill that I think that the county and, and Commissioner Darrett in particular had some experience drafting and working on.
Oh, is this the manufactured home park? You're on my, um, you, Commissioner Dare?
Yes, it is. Geez, I should know that number, shouldn't I?
See, okay, good. Now, yeah, so now it's getting more clear. Okay.
That makes me so happy that we could just like flip it over because I just sent an email to uh um Housing Director, uh Taylor Smiley-Wolff to see uh what, if I'm going to be able to get the governor to do something executive with that.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you, Doug.
Um Be on a video call.
Commissioner Chang.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm, I'm gonna have to leave in a minute, but uh I, I guess I just want to say if we have an oppor- if there's a placeholder bill that can be filled with homelessness-related things, I would love to see us uh make a push to uh get our, our, our policy goal of allowing outdoor shelter in the immediate vicinity of urban growth boundaries um to be uh allowable uh as a, as a goal for our, you know, our, you know, any that I would like that to be our first goal for um you know, any efforts around thirty-two seventy-seven versus uh pursuing something that was very controversial and complex and um, you know, didn't even make it to a hearing in the first go-round.
Well, uh, so then go ahead.
If we're talking about six seventy-three, I've actually um Rep. Levy, um Emerson Levy knows all about this bill, and she had said that they would help me next year with it. And also I talked to um Vice Chair Jeff Helfrich of that, and he is on the Housing um Committee. So anyway, as Doug had told me, I should have started with this project in the House and not the Senate. And I've already been working on it for um the future.
So it sounds like the House Bill three-two-seven-seven uh is a blank slate for us, a possible container to do something, and we have multiple ideas. So uh Doug, at this point in time, it sounds like, you know, a short window, obviously, and not clear direction, but how about we take a, a support position, knowing that we may be the ones putting content to this, and Commissioner Chang's idea is different than Commissioner Dare's, but And Commissioner Chang's idea is different than Commissioner Dare's, but, uh, yeah, let's see what we can do in the next week or two.
Well, maybe he didn't hear my comments about the fact that Rimrock only has a quarter. Of their usage because of the staff limitation, and this is a workforce housing project. With over three hundred single wide manufactured homes, nine hundred square feet. Um, clearly workforce housing for our community, and I I do believe we need it.
Uh, well, so let's just confirm. Do we want to, let's, let's acknowledge this as a, as vehicle that we may use in some fashion. Uh, and I, uh, you know, I would support both of them is my position. Uh, so. Uh, let's hold on to House Bill three two seven seven. Is there support for a position to support? Knowing that it's kind of the the last mad dash to see if we can get something from here.
I would support that some of.
I'm 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 signing off. I'm not supportive of thirty two seventy seven as a. Vehicle for six seventy three type goals. I, you know, the. The the reality is that the many of the things that people are complaining about our state land use planning system prohibiting. Are allowed. They are just not technically feasible because of sanitation and other other related needs. So. I I, um, if if that's, if that's kind of what what we're considering, I'm not supportive and, uh, signing off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I mean, let's acknowledge that and put it in as a two, uh, support, knowing that, I mean, this is. You know, magic must happen here, obviously, at the, at the, this point in the session, but it's a vehicle that we might be able to use for something. Obviously, we need legislative support from, uh, our local delegation to put more clarity around this, and we do have different opinions, uh, within the commission.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so as I say, Doug, uh, thank you very much for what you do down there and maybe we'll. You know, with the discussion, there are kind of different positions, but let's see if there's something we can do with it.
Yeah, I'll I'll chat with Rep Levy and, uh, and get a, a long and short about what the possibilities of, uh. Any amendment at this late point in the session. So I'll I'll chat with her hopefully today and I'll get back to you guys next week.
Yeah, well, and you know, we have specific letters on the books saying that we'd like to the opportunity to cite, uh, um. You know, for camping or or managed camps or whatever the terminology is at the edge of a U G B. So maybe it's a vehicle for that, too. Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I I just did hear from, uh, Commissioner Kramer and twenty five oh six dash nine is still in House rules. So maybe that's not a good sign.
Yeah, I, any bill that has had a hearing in House rules is a step ahead of bills that have not had a hearing. So. House rules is one of those committees that'll probably stay open until literally the last day of the session. So. Uh, it 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 may be on life support because, of course, after it passes the House Rules Committee in the House floor, it would, it would then have to go to the Senate. And the Senate is, uh, now quite a bit behind on even the bills that were already regularly scheduled. So. It it might have a bit of an uphill path, but if, you know, I will say that just as an example, and I should have mentioned this before. Uh, a similar situation with the Republican walkout took place. In twenty nineteen, and at the end of the day, what they did is the Republicans negotiated to come back and vote on a s- a specific set of bills. So, and a lot of those bills were kind of their priorities, rural bills got through. So it's very possible the Senate leadership could say. You know, we will come back, we will vote on all your budgets, but we also want to ensure that these fifteen bills get heard and twenty. Five oh six because it's a, a bill supported by, uh, rural Oregon, might be one of those bills. So. Miracles can happen.
Right. Hey, is there any other bills, Nick, that we have out there? I didn't see anything else highlighted.
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner. I see Senate Bill six forty three. It says, uh, I just see it's highlighted and perhaps Jen knows. Uh, or Doug know, uh, the reason.
Actually, uh, that is a bill I want to cover this morning. Hi, Tom Kuhn from Public Health. And I would just want to bring your attention Senate Bill six forty three, which will allow for certain foods to be prepared. In uninspected home kitchens and sold directly to consumers. Uh, some of these foods that would be allowed in this bill include things like baked goods, popcorn, jams, honey, et cetera. The bill, however, would not allow these foods to be sold in restaurants and other food service establishments such as schools, daycares, hospitals, nursing homes. And the bill allows for the foods to be sold from the home, online, through mail and events. And that could be like at places like Farmer's Market or sold directly from their property. And I have not up to this point brought this bill to your attention for review. However, I've been tracking it through the session. I also wanted to note that Senator Knope is the sponsor for the bill. Um, Oregon Clo was completely opposed to this bill, but recently changed to oppose and less amended. And they are bringing forward an amendment with two simple language changes. That both Clo and the Oregon Environmental Health Specialists are proposing. Uh, they're very small changes to the bill. Would create a huge impact on how this bill is carried out. So, um, or is everyone tracking with me? Okay, I know there's, I ran through that pretty quickly, but. Anyways, the two small changes are that. They would re- we were asking to remove coffee shops from the definition retailer. Because as written, coffee shops would be allowed to sell these foods from the uninspected kitchens. The problem is, especially for us, we really have trouble, there is no differentiation between coffee shops. And restaurants because coffee shops are licensed as restaurants, depending on capacity. And we're really worried if you leave the word coffee shop in there that that would lead to sales. At restaurants, any place that has, serves coffee, breakfast restaurants, things of that nature. And we're just worried that this would create much more widespread selling of these products, which could create a larger risk for foodborne illness. And then a more of a burden for our inspectors who are going to have to keep an eye out everywhere for these products. So that's one of our major concerns. The other small language change is that, uh, they are proposing that the, um, home kitchens would get an I D number. From the Department of Agriculture, but they're not requiring it as written. So we just like to be, have it made. That's required that they get an I D number that's placed on the labels for these products. So in the event that there is a, uh, foodborne illness from consuming this, we can trace it back to the source. So those are very, two very small language changes, but make a big difference. And my ask today is that the Commissioners support this bill with amendments only. And if you could consider communicating support for these, this proposed amendment to Senator Knope. Uh, there's a work session on this Tuesday, the sixteenth, and it would be great if we could communicate to him. That we would support this bill with these two small amendments, which would be a very. Uh, would be a big thing for our environmental health specialists, uh, to have these included. Because this would at least provide some safeguards, and if you consider, uh, drafting and communication to Senator Knope, I'd be, uh, more than happy to draft it for you. So, uh, that's the ask today.
Great. So proposed amendments to make the bill better on the, on the ground.
Yes.
Uh, I like it. Uh, if you're supportive of that, Commissioner Dare.
Um, I think I have some friends that make cookies. That were, um, behind this legislation. I just have that clear feeling and, um, anyway, but, you know, Tommy, if you feel that the amendments are appropriate. And still giving people that are raising kids. The opportunity to make cookies, um, I think it's important, you know, keep it safe, but. Um, it is, um, an opportunity. So I I could support that and I could say something to Senator. And up's office. Are we, what you wanted us to do a letter?
I could draft a letter for you to review and you can maybe email it to him or whatever, however you'd like to communicate.
Yeah, just something short and sweet.
But, uh, yeah, so I support that. So there's a, yes, uh, let's support. Uh, sorry, what was the bill number?
Six forty three.
Six forty three, uh, a support position, uh, with amendments very specifically, uh, and yeah, Tom, if you can just email us that. Uh, we'll make sure to get it to the office. Commissioner Dare, I'll I'll rely on you to get it to the office. And then, uh, yeah, if you want to testify during, is it a public hearing, you said, or a work session?
No, it's just a work session.
Work session. Okay, so we need to communicate before that.
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll get something to you today.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Anything else? Maybe dinner link today.
Doug, do we have any idea on all of the drought package? Um, I did attend the Water Managers Meeting yesterday. Um, here it for the region, and the wonderful news is our soil moisture percentile is up in the blue. We were in the red for a long time and we're now finally up in the blue. So that was some really good news. And then. Moisture today from, uh. Water year from October first is now we're upper Deschutes, Crooked, we're at ninety five percent. That includes the snowpack and, uh, the rain, but it doesn't include the last couple of days of rain. But we, do we have any idea if there's any, um, headway with that drought package?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Um, yeah, I've been tracking that very closely and having pretty much daily talks with Rep Helm and Rep Owens on on this bill. Um, I think the the lottery bonding elements of the bill. Appear to be doing well in Ways and Means. The general fund portions of the bill appear to be doing less well. So the the package is about a hundred and eighty million dollar package. It was about fifty fifty bonding and general fund. And what Ways and Means has told, uh. Representative Helm and Representative Owens is that the general fund request need to be cut by about eighty percent. So, uh, instead of, I think the request and my number is going to be off, so please don't quote me, but, you know, if. If the request was for eighty million dollars or ninety million dollars in general fund, uh, funding for the package, uh, they're being told. We're going to give you twenty or twenty two. Um, so that's led to quite a long discussion about the, uh. The stream restoration package, the juniper management thinning package. It's in House Bill thirty one forty two, but is also part of the drought package, and it looks like that. It's very likely to be cut by the Ways and Means Committee from nine million dollars, uh, for seven counties back to about a million dollars. For one to two counties, uh, so one soil water conservation district project and county project. So, uh, those are. Uh, low numbers, um, but that's the reality that we have as far as what Ways and Means is willing to allocate. We'll know more after the forecast.
Okay, that's really, um. I just disappointing news. Um, but thank you for that.
Next Tuesday is a big day.
Wednesday.
Or is it Wednesday? Okay.
So, good morning. Uh, just want to give you a quick, uh, update and, uh, praise report. On the House Bill, uh, twenty one oh one. Now, that's our fund exchange, uh, bill. Um, the dashboard amendments, which basically lock in the program at. At thirty five million dollars a year, which is pretty close to to what it has been the last several years. Uh, went to work session last night in the Joint Committee on Transportation, uh, passed out of there unanimously. And, uh, we'll be headed to, uh, the House floor, uh, bypassing actually Ways and Means. Uh, because it's a reallocation of funding and not and not new revenue. So, um, headed to the House floor, uh, as soon as next week and, uh, feel pretty good about that. Uh, we've, we've come a long way.
Great. Congratulations. Teamwork on that one. Uh, Doug, go ahead. We're winding down here, it looks like.
No, I don't really have any, anything additional, but I I was going to say, uh, that's great news on the fund exchange that's been hanging out there for a long time. And this is one of the last, or last night, I think was the last or the second to the last. Opportunity for the Joint Committee on Transportation to take action. So they waited till, you know, the, the wee hours of the day.
Great. Okay, so it looks like we're set here. Uh, next big thing is that, uh. Financial update for the state of Oregon, figure out how much dollars may be available for distribution in Ways and Means. So. With that, looks like our meeting will be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.